Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Maryville Town Council meeting for today, Tuesday, April 11th at 6:30 PM. Please stand for our invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence following the invocation.
Let's pray. Well, God, our Father, we come to you tonight, first of all, to acknowledge your greatness and your goodness to us, Father, and for the events of the past week that brought a community together. Lord, we thank you for the unity that was shown, for the strength that was provided and will be provided, for the lives that have been hurt by this and will continue to feel the effects. We pray for them as well, for healing and for good recovery. Father, for us as a community, we lift ourselves up before you to acknowledge who you are in our lives and to worship you. And, God, we thank you for tonight, this meeting, a very important pivotal time in a community as it continues to move forward. Pray for your blessings, your wisdom, your grace, your knowledge, all through the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Ward, would you lead us in the pledge tonight, please?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk Treasure tonight, how are you?
I am fine.
Thanks for joining us.
How are you, President Bella?
Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, I will. President Bella?
Here.
Vice President Hardaway?
Here.
Councilman Minchuck?
Here.
Councilwoman Span?
Here.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Oh, I thought I said here.
No, I was asked for Span.
Oh, she said Span. Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, no problem.
Okay, Usalak's here.
Councilman Pettit?
Here.
Councilman White. Five are here today.
Five present and two absent. We have a quorum. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on tonight to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations, we'd have a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm sure many of you saw the many pinwheels in front of the town hall and along Broadway. I'd like to call to the podium at this time Ellen Hennessy to read the proclamation. Mr. Minchuck, anything to add?
Just wanted to introduce Ellen to everybody. Ellen is an outstanding young lady, and of course outstanding young ladies come from Ward III. She is also part of the Maryville Alliance Club, who's been very instrumental throughout our town, throughout various efforts. And she is also president of the Prevent Child Abuse for Lake County, Indiana. So we are very happy to have you here this evening, ma'am, and we appreciate you coming.
Thank you. I would also like to compliment the town, how everybody pulled together after this past week. It was wonderful to see.
Great.
As a member of Prevent Child Abuse Lake County, we have a mission, and the mission is, we just reworded it, that together we will work towards a time when all children in Lake County experience a childhood in which they are safe, cared for, and loved. And I'd like to thank the council here for their willingness to show and help increase the awareness of how important it is to protect our children. The proclamation from the town of Maryville states, whereas every child deserves to live in a safe and loving household, yet for hundreds of thousands of children across our nation, abuse and neglect are a tragic reality. During Child National, during National Child Abuse Prevention Month, our country stands as one to condemn and combat child abuse in all of its forms, including physical, emotional, and sexual, as well as online sexual exploitation. We raise awareness about the risk factors that can lead to child abuse and neglect, and we highlight the importance of supporting families to prevent child maltreatment. As a town, we must work together to prevent and address child abuse and ensure that every child can grow up in a safe environment and live a happy, prosperous life. Whereas in the fiscal year 2019, 4.4 million reports were made to Child Protective Services, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solution requires input and actions from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of the town of Maryville, and whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation, and more importantly in Maryville, whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects, they have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children, and whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong and thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. Whereas the Maryville Alliance Club has brought this important issue to our attention, we recognize the importance of bringing this matter to the attention of our residency. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, does thereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and call upon the residents of Maryville to dedicate ourselves to recognize, observe, discuss, and educate others with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and other activities to improve the quality of life for all children and families throughout the town of Maryville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Mr. Minchuck, did you have a motion for the council?
Mr. President, child prevention, or child abuse prevention is something that is near and dear to my heart, something I've done throughout my career, and I would definitely, definitely like to make this motion and like to spread it throughout the word of town of Maryville. Thank you.
Second, motion by Mr. Minchuck. Second, by Mr. Hardaway for approval of the proclamation. Excuse me, questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. Thank you, and thank you again, Ellen. Beautiful job reading it. Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable register voucher approval for April 11th, as well as the approval of the town council meeting minutes of March 28th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Pettit, second amendment, Mrs. Usalak, for approval of the consent agenda. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and motion carries. Moving on tonight to standing and special committee reports, Budget and Finance, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Street Department, Mr. Minchuck.
Yes, this evening, I would like to combine the Street Department and Public Safety Committees for one report. As we all know, we had a giant storm that affected our town last week. Our Street Department, our Police Department, and our Fire Department, hands down, showed how good they are. They all, all the men and women of all those departments put in some serious, long, hard hours, hard work, very little sleep, and we're out there getting it done. So thank you. Your jobs go very, very recognized, and we thank you for all your assistance from the Police Department, from Steve, from your men and women. And I know the Fire Department guys aren't here, but I saw them yesterday, and I thank them as well. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. Ditto.
Mr. President, as the other, I guess Jeff and I were the two councilmen whose areas were most affected, and Forest Hills, I've never seen anything like that. Jeff, your Madison Meadows, and even Southmore Park on my side of Madison, walking through and seeing people with cars crushed on Deer Path and on Indian Trail, they were extremely happy to see the town out there. And when we told them they would be out there on Sunday, they were pleasantly surprised. So Steve, to all of your guys, can't say enough about them. Excellent job.
Thank you. Sure. Thank you all. Moving on tonight to elections, public relations, and town beautification, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Environmental Affairs, anything from Mr. White, Mr. Reardon?
No, sir.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Public Safety, we already covered that, Jeff, right?
Yes, sir.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Usalak.
Yes, I guess the Street Department will start checking on each park to make sure everything is in order, and they always mow the lawns, I think, like once a week. So the Street Department and the Park Department both do a good job with that. And Terrence, I haven't heard anything about the roof for the shelter in Rosenbaum Park. Did the bids all come in, or did they accept it?
Good evening. I'll pass that to Town Manager Reardon.
Okay. Pat?
We had an issue with the bids. There was too much of a spread in the pricing, and we've contacted the two companies to ask them to send in an itemized scope of work. We're working with our building commissioner to flush all that out. I'm confident that we'll have information for you and the balance of the council at the next meeting.
Well, thank you very much. The children will appreciate it. They're already out there today with the weather.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
That's it.
Abandoned and blighted properties, Mr. Hardaway.
No report, Mr. President.
Dean and Barbara White Community Center, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Special Projects, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to first go to Mrs. Shine so she can give us an update on Juneteenth and what's happening there.
Thank you. The Juneteenth Committee has met several times. We have our sponsorship package in place. We also have our vendor application in place, and we will be giving out our flyers, not flyers, our poster boards to go to the businesses, and we've already emailed many of the other businesses that participated last year. We've gotten good response. Our theme is the Juneteenth Freedom Festival. We should have a Black History museum. We're going to have a kitty corner. There'll be, of course, vendors, food, live music performances, and this year, we're going to have a healthy community resource tent, bringing together services like Community Health Net to come to the community and let the community know where they can get good services and resources in that area. We are looking forward to it, the Juneteenth Celebration Freedom Festival. We have a wonderful core committee that is in place, and if anyone else would like to join us, our next meeting will be April 18th at 5:00 PM here. If you have any questions, you can contact myself or Robin Johnson.
Thank you. Great report there. So we're moving, Mr. President. I won't add anything to what she said. Sounds like she has everything in control. First meeting in May, we're going to have Municipal Day. We're still in the process of doing that, and we're going to meet, I think, tomorrow with department heads.
10 o'clock.
At 10:00 AM so that we can make sure that we have a better Municipal Day than we've ever had before. I'm excited about it. One last thing, Mr. President. We met today with the Legacy Foundation, Mr. Bella and myself, to talk about, you know, one of the things that we said that we were going to do with the excess money from the Black History Celebration Dinner was to start a scholarship program. So meeting with the Legacy Foundation today, we decided we have $25,000 that we set aside that we earmarked for this endeavor, and so at the end of this school year, we're going to award four scholarships, $1,000 each, three for Maryville High School kids and one for an Andorian student, so that we can do what we said we were going to do. We put $21,000 of that into an endowment, and so that money will stay in the endowment at 4% interest, and then hopefully it'll grow every year, and people will have the opportunity going through the website for this scholarship, because this is the first time Maryville has ever had its own scholarship. And so we're excited about that, and the name of the scholarship is Maryville... Help me out there.
The Town of Maryville Inclusive Scholarship.
Right, thank you. It's inclusive, and we stayed away from certain words so that we just wanted to be inclusive in what we're trying to do. So if anybody has any questions about how this is going to be done, the Legacy Foundation will handle all aspects of the scholarship. There won't be any town employees, any town elected officials, or anybody with the town to have any say into how the scholarships are awarded, who the recipients are, or any of that. So this is the cleanest way that we can do it, and hopefully, when we roll it out this year, then we'll be able to get donations every year so that we'll be able to continue to grow this thing as we continue to grow the town. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them after the council meeting. Thank you, Mr. President. Do we need a motion?
Actually, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize myself to sign the fund agreement with the Legacy Foundation, as long as Mr. Settenoff agrees.
I totally agree.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway. Chair recognizes Mr. Pettit as a second. To approve the Legacy Foundation Town of Maryville Scholarship Fund. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call, please, on this particular one.
Of course, Mr. President. President Bella?
Aye.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usalak?
Aye.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Five to zero, motion carries. Thank you.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Reardon, I'll have a signed copy for you after the meeting. Moving on to the Department and Commission Reports, Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
Our next meeting should be next week.
Okay. Stormwater Management Resources, Mr. Lake.
Yeah, as mentioned earlier, we had tornado come through town, which was devastating. We got emergency maintenance contractors clearing out in Forest Hills, the unregulated Turkey Creek lateral there, taking out any blockages and any leaning trees that will be probably soon falling into the ditch. Our board, our Stormwater Board, also agreed to solicit proposals for right-of-way drainage for two subdivisions. One's a Country Club subdivision that's north of 61st Avenue and east of Taft. The other is Independence Hill, Third Edition, which is south of US 30 and west of Taft. Also want to start thinking about Arbor Day. We do it every year. Tradition is last Friday in April, but we can pick locally any day we want. We have to do the proclamation, and we'd like to partner with NIPSCO, Parks Department, Lions Club, and any others that want to join in on that. And our contractor started at 93rd Randolph, a big drainage project out there that's going to help out two subdivisions out in the Panhandle. So that's it for now.
Thank you, ma'am. South Shore Visitors and Convention Authority, Mr. Reardon.
We have a Board of Directors meeting next Thursday. I'll report out. Council members can look for an electronic copy of the latest newsletter featuring activities throughout the county. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Pat. Fire Territory Board, Mr. Minchuck.
Next meeting will be in June.
Okay. Department Reports, Ms. Shine?
Yes, I would just like to, Mr. President, reiterate the fact that as we stated earlier that we did go through the storm and that the Planning and Building Department, we are here to help provide you with licensed contractors, people that can do the job. We're also here to help you with your permits. We have been told by leadership that we can waive the fees for the permit, but we still have to charge for the inspection fees for our inspectors. But please do not give contractors money unless you know that they are a certified contractor that's licensed in the Town of Maryville, so that people won't take the residents' money, and then we have to try to help find the person and that thing. So we are here to help.
Thank you, Sheila. Mr. King, Street Department.
So we've been very busy, obviously, with the storms. The ladies and gentlemen in our department have done a tremendous job. We're still going back in the Forest Hills, Chapel Manor, Madison Meadows, just people still bringing stuff out to the street. They've done, you know, our people have done a great cleanup job. I can't, you know, can't speak highly enough about them. They've all done a great job. Sunday, Sheila actually joined me on Sunday, and we rode around in these subdivisions, and she jotted down contractors' names and just made sure they were on the up and up and licensed in the town. So we spent most of the day together, you know, doing that, taking care of that. But we'll continue the cleanup efforts. You know, we've had outreach from other communities. Highland and Munster have both reached out. I've talked to them. We've got a handle on it enough where we did not need their assistance. Like I said, we were out all weekend. We were out on, you know, Friday was a holiday. We worked the holiday as well. Our spring cleanup has started. It started April 10th on Monday. So we've got dumpsters at our facility on 73rd Avenue. Residents can bring debris and items there to dispose of. We're there, you know, Monday through Friday. The gates are open from 7:15 to 2:45, and we're also there for the next two Saturdays, from 8 to noon. And that's all I've got for now.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. President.
Mr. Minchuck.
One thing, I'm sorry, I slipped my mind earlier while I was doing my thank yous. I wanted to thank Terrence and his staff. His staff also put in extra hours keeping this community center open and keeping it available for a warming shelter if needed. That was Friday and Saturday night. We also had volunteers come out, I think it was Saturday, when we walked up on the street, hating out flyers door to door, all letting everybody know about the warming shelters. So thank you, Terrence. I appreciate your staff and everything they did for us.
Mr. President?
Mr. Reardon, sure.
Thank you. If I could piggyback off really both Jeff's comment and Steve's, yesterday, we hosted a meeting with, really, every agency that was involved in responding to the storm. We had representatives from the counties, Homeland Security, and EMA, to the trustees' office here in Ross Township. It was well-attended and great dialogue, and I can't, as everyone has said here, say enough about how, not surprising, as region communities do, Maryville came together and worked very hard. We continue to do that as needed, and so we look forward to continuing to work with these agencies in approving our first response. And about the town staff, as Councilman Minchuck mentioned, Parks Department, Human Resources, Economic Development, everybody jumped in, everybody volunteered, and it was very rewarding to see.
Great. I'd like to add, too, that I'd like to put a thank you out to the residents who were affected. You know, it was a very difficult time, but the residents really kept their cool. They worked closely with town staff, with emergency services, Fire Department, Police Department. We only had one scary moment where we couldn't find one resident. I was with the chief, actually, and started to walk in her home, and another officer yelled from the street, "She's here." She ran next door, and we found her. So to go through this with a tornado touching down and not have any serious injuries and no fatalities, we were very lucky. And I want to thank the residents for doing the cleanup, working with the town, and getting the town back together, and we will prosper from this and move forward. So, thank you all. Terrence, Parks Department.
We'll just continue to echo what was just mentioned earlier to our staff, who always give their absolute best. We're grateful for them and their willingness just to be a team and to continue to work with everybody. This week is our first week back. We just had people come in. Our kids are back from spring break, so we're just slowly picking back up. Other than that, there's no other report.
Thank you. Chief Newses, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to touch what everybody's been talking about in reference to the storm and tornado that we had. We're very thankful that nobody was hurt, nobody was killed. Could have been a lot worse. Other communities weren't as lucky. Ultimately, we did learn a lot of stuff in regards to how we respond to these tornadoes. We were prepared, we were ready to work, but we learned that we can also streamline things. So that's something that we're going to work on doing to improve and offer better public safety services to the public, to the people of Maryville. Secondly, I would like to announce that we are going to be doing a Maryville Community and Police Meet Night on May 25th, 6:00 PM till 8:00 PM, at the Dean and Barbara White Center. The goal of this is to get in contact with, or just actually speak with the public, kind of show them what we got as far as our neat vehicles and toys and whatnot. And also, we're going to be doing a Q and A. This is something that I've really wanted to do. I've really wanted to talk to the public and explain to them why we do the things that we do, because, to be real, the public are our eyes and ears. They're the ones that, there's a lot more citizens in Maryville than there is police officers, so we rely on the citizens to help us a lot. So the more they know, the more they can help us. And Mrs. Neal, I'm going to, I took your advice. We're going to move forward with doing the QR codes on flyers at this event, and we're going to pass them out. So thank you for that. Also, we're still continuing in the Joint Operation Task Force with the other agencies, so if you see a lot of cars coming through town, different police agencies, it's because we're participating in these blitzes, and the purpose of those is look for stolen cars, look for people with warrants, dangerous felony warrants and whatnot. So you'll be seeing that still. And lastly, we are working, since I inherited the code enforcement, we've been working, and I've been working with Mr. Reardon, and we're working on addressing some of these homes that are just an eyesore. So also, I'm going to put it out to the public. If you have a neighbor, if you see something that is horrible, please report it, and we'll take care of it. We'll address it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else to add, Mr. Reardon?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have no first reading ordinances. We do have a couple second reading ordinances. Ordinance 23-12, it's the ordinance of the Town of Maryville authorizing additional appropriations in the 2023 budget, specifically the General Fund Department Six, and authorizing a reduction of appropriations in the 2023 budget, specifically in the Park's non-reverting fund.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Mrs. Usalak, and a second by Mr. Pettit to approve ordinance 23-12 on second and final reading. Any questions or comments from the council? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Does that include, can I give a comment on that?
Absolutely.
So I just want to just kind of make sure we all have the understanding of what this actual does. So essentially, for our Recreation Division, that means that we're not doing anything in terms of programming for the entire in terms of programming for the entire rest of the year from the recreation standpoint, which means there's only two sources of income that's gonna be consistently coming in to the center for the rest of the fiscal year of 2023, which is our gym and our special events side. So, I think that's very important to understand and clear, because as now is summertime, families are gonna be looking for things to do. We do have an event that'll be coming up in May where families can find out what's going on. However, the question is gonna be posed to how come the Parks Department does not have anything going on? And so, with this reduction, that does not allow us to plan and do that. So, you know, it has to be done, it's done. But I just want to make sure that was clarified and understood in that.
But I don't think it should stagnate any good ideas that anybody in the Parks Department might have, Terrence. So please present those to the committee. If we need to find money to fund a specific event, a movie night, or something special you had in mind, let us know. This does not just negate that we're not gonna do anything.
Right, but I'm just saying...
So that really wasn't quite accurate.
Well, I mean, the timing of it is always tough, too, because, you know, it's a quarter of the way through a new year.
Right.
And so, any plan that you may have had, now you have to go back and backtrack and change all of those things. So, you know, with that, budgets are there for a reason. Budgets allow you to have X amount of money to do certain things. With many of these line items going to be gone, that means that certain things that we may have wanted to do, we're not doing right now, but we have to go and, to you, when really, the idea is to plan as far ahead as possible to be prepared for stuff, so. Like I said, it has to be done.
If there's no funding to support the budget, though, that's why we're in the trick pack, so that's, I agree. So, Mr. Pettit, we'll leave it to you and your committee to work with Terrence.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
President Bella?
Aye.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Five to zero, motion carries. Moving on tonight to Ordinance 23-13. It's the ordinance of the Town of Maryville appropriating additional monies within the various fire protection territory funds for the year 2023 that were not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak, for approval of Ordinance 23-13. It's for Fire Department Repair Parts, the amount is $75,000. Questions or comments from the council?
As I reported at last meeting, they had an unexpected repair to one of their ladder trucks, that's pretty much what this is for.
Right. Anything else? Open to the public, any public comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Vice President Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Five to zero, thank you, the motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolutions, Resolution 23-10 is a resolution of Town of Maryville, authorizing a transfer of monies within the funds of the Parks Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak, for approval of Resolution 23-10. This is specifically a $500,000 decrease from the gift fund that we get from the White Foundation, going back into the Parks Nonreverting Fund. The increase is 500,000, and net effect is zero. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, this is a resolution, a voice vote is appropriate. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. See, Terrence, we take some away, then we give some back. Resolution 23-11 is a resolution of Town of Maryville, transferring monies within the 2023 budget. There's Town General Fund, Town Administration, Code Enforcement, Part-Time Code Enforcement, et cetera. The decrease is 36,585, the increase is the same, the net effect is zero.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Uselak, with a second by Mr. Hardaway, for approval of Resolution 23-11. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to Resolution 23-12, it's a resolution of Town of Maryville, transferring monies within the 2023 budget. This is ARP Revenue Replacements Fund, the decrease is 268,570. The increase is the same, the net effect is zero. We're transferring money into the ARP Other Equipment Fund. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Pettit, for approval of Resolution 23-12. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Moving on tonight to the American Rescue Plan Register Summary Voucher, Mr. Hardaway.
Thank you, Mr. President, tonight's voucher is $5,991.25. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Hardaway, with a second by Mr. Minchuck, to approve the Accounts Payable Voucher for the ARP Fund. The amount is $5,991.25. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Shine, do we have any BZA or large gathering actions before us tonight?
No, Mr. President.
Thank you. Old business, any old business before us? Any new business before us tonight? Moving on to public comment, is there any public comment this evening? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we allow three minutes for comments.
Nadadoti, 1134 West 72nd Court, hello, Mr. President, I'm back.
How are you tonight?
Oh, good. No one came to my house, and I'm still waiting, but that's okay.
Well, I think we were at the house, weren't we, Sheila and Jeff Minchuck?
I have camera, I haven't seen anybody back there.
We didn't bother you.
Yeah, they were there.
Y'all should've bothered me, because I need to know that y'all coming, Ms. Sheila.
I apologize, we just was trying to get out there and take a look at the water. And Mr. Minchuck, and...
I think Mr. Lake, too.
And Pat. I mean, Matt.
Who was Matt?
Just a comment... He's the Stormwater Management Director, man.
Joe Fish met with the project manager out there. The one thing they didn't do yet is put an outlet across the street. That's gonna keep that wetland in check, there's two wetlands there, so that water level should not go beyond, so once that's in, it should be in now, actually. So, we'll check on that tomorrow and make sure they get that in there. It's on the plan, I could show you on the plan exactly.
I want to see that, too, and I'm gonna be watching the camera to make sure that you come out there tomorrow.
We've been there.
Okay.
We're working, we're moving forward.
Okay, I'm watching.
What was your address again, 11?
1134.
1134.
West 72nd Court. It's not as bad, so I do want to say that, but it's still there.
It put the outlet in there, yeah. It should go beyond, I'll show you on the plan exactly what it does.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna sit down now.
That's okay. Thank you, thanks for your patience. No problem. Any other comment tonight? Seeing none. Announcements, Plan Commission meeting, April 18th at 6:30. The RDC meeting is April 25th at 6:15. And our next town council meeting is April 25th at 6:30.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway, second by Mr. Minchuck, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all. Thank you, too, Angie.
You are welcome.
Appreciate it.